Welcome, everyone. It's the December 12th, 2022, regular Board meeting, Board of Education meeting. Thank you for coming out tonight. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could all stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is an approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight? In the case, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes, motion four.
Thank you. Next up, we have some recognitions. A lot of students.
Yeah, we don't have them all here tonight, but usually around this time, we just recognize the, our Warren Illinois State Scholars. So we've got a handful of individuals who are recognized because of their ACT or their SAT test score and their GPA. We sent a notice out to families just a little bit ago to recognize them for that. And just want to recognize that we have a whole lot of students that are recognized at the state level for that. That's a really great accomplishment. In addition, just want to thank Sam's Club, Quest Food Service, Performance Services, Nothing Bunk Cakes, Blue Devil Booster Club, and Illuminate for recent gifts to the district. And that, that item is in consent. And that's all I have.
Okay. I want to go back to the state scholars. If they were all here, that'd be wonderful, but they're not. So congratulations.
Well, yeah.
That was a recognition. I never had to worry about getting in high school. So I can't imagine the effort it took.
They just led him out of high school.
Next up is the public comment. This is the, the time of the night where visitors are allowed up to three minutes to address the Board of Education. I've gone through the binder here. Nobody signed up ahead of time, but that does not preclude anybody if they would like to address the board at this time. I'll assume nobody would like to address the board, so we'll just move on. Next up is the President's Report. I do not have anything too specific to talk about. And I do want to mention, you know, not that long ago, we were all downtown at the IASB conference. I didn't know if anybody wanted to give their thoughts on anything they learned or talked about at that conference. It's okay if we don't.
Well, I, I was the delegate for the assembly and the voting and all that stuff. So it was my first experience at that. So it was quite interesting. And it, it went quite long as well. It didn't end in, it was scheduled for two hours or something. And they weren't even close to being done. And there's a lot of Robert's Rules of Orders questions and, and, and nothing went through cleanly. Everybody, there's always somebody on both sides at every one that came to a vote. And, but they still all passed with the recommendation of the committee. And, and then the ones that they didn't recommend voting for, they didn't even discuss unless they came to a vote. So somebody had to come forward and say, no, I want this one to be discussed. And then there was a vote on whether we should have a vote on that. And then there was a vote on that. And then so on, so on. So none of those made it back. So it went pretty much as, as it was planned. So I thought that was interesting. And I'll certainly give that up to whoever would like to do that next.
Yeah. I was gonna say, thank you for taking on that. And I'm looking at Tony, and Tony's politely saying, yeah, it's all yours.
Taking that, that's exactly how it was the previous year.
Yeah.
And does not surprise me one bit.
Yeah. And then I did go, and I was in a diversity presentation with Natalia and Dr. Weisman. And, and it was by the outgoing president of the Illinois School Board Association, I believe was her position.
Superintendent.
Superintendent. Yeah, State Board of Education Superintendent, right. Very wonderful woman given, very, very good presentation.
Very insightful.
And she also said that, that we now have a, they now have a, as part of the state's report card. It's not public yet because they're still working on it and trying to get it all figured out. Dr. Weisman can see it. And, but there is a scorecard having to do with diversity and how you're performing and things of that nature. So I thought that was a major step forward. And it will be updated with this year's numbers, next year. They just did 2019 just to have someplace to start. And they didn't want to include the COVID years for obvious reasons. So we're starting with this year we're in now, we'll have a report on next year. So I think that, I'll look forward to seeing, you know, what that looks like and what the data is. So, and it was a very insightful presentation with a lot of thoughts about how things you do that you don't think are discouraging that, that are discouraging. So it was enjoyable.
A lot of the conference was really based around equity and diversity, which I found it very empowering because our school is very diverse. So I found many of those, many of those sessions were the ones that I attended. I also attended an EL session, which was very informative with Dr. Weisman. And he and I spoke very briefly about a couple of things that we think for that specific kind of program that we can start looking into and, you know, hopefully implementing some right things for, for that category of students. I also attended a class or a session that was how to man, it was something like when you're, basically when you're a board member, but you're also a parent, which I'm also a parent. I found that very insight, you know, very insightful. I did try to use one of the tactics. I don't know that it really worked for me or not, but, you know, it, it was, it was helpful. But overall, I, I had a wonderful time and learned a lot. And I was really happy to see that there was so much informative information on equity. So I think that's something that we need.
I attended something on finance. I attended something on school security, and I got to know my peers much better. And I enjoyed it very much, even at that.
Sounds good.
There was a good one on student board representation.
Oh, yes.
That Oswego School District has a-
I got there too late.
Yeah. It was, the room was full. But they have an application process and student then is assigned to the board. They even vote, but their vote doesn't count. But it, they do get to vote and learn about the process. And a nice thing for them to put on college applications or just a good experience for them. It was interesting.
Well, that's something that we've actually talked about, kind of implementing back.
That's why I went.
Yeah.
I wanted to see and hear about how, and a successful implementation of this.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm not, I mean, there are things that we could take if we continue to go down that road. But I thought it was well done. And they seem to have done a very good job with it. So.
My sessions were pretty much based on finance and bargaining, two hot topics around here. So that's all say that. I'll have to admit, my highlight of the session was I went to a small breakout session and Jesse Jackson was there.
Oh.
Got to shake his hand and talk to him for about five seconds. And I, I've actually done that before when I was in high school, like 20 years ago. So it was kind of good.
20 years ago? Come on.
I'm not good with numbers.
You're gonna find it.
So on to the next, on to committee reports.
I don't think we have anything to add to the notes that are there.
Want to the superintendent's report?
Yeah. So I did just, in addition to the memo that's provided, just as an update from my last month, just wanted to give a quick update on strategic planning and where we are at on that. So in Jan, we are kicking off our strategic planning process, our update to the strategic plan in January. In January, we'll have staff that go through a visioning, all of our staff are going to go through a visioning session that first day that they're back on Institute Day in the morning. They'll spend about 90 minutes in a small group. They're picking, right now, they're picking their topic of choice for that discussion. There's four options. They can be in a group that focuses on academic excellence, one that focuses on social emotional wellness, and one that focuses on diversity, equity, inclusion. And then our fourth subject or category is school improvement processes. We, we've trained about 20, 25 students to facilitate those conversations. So we're excited about the student leaders being part of that. Students are going to go through a similar process on a couple Wednesday mornings. We're going to do a family survey during the month. And then we're going to have a steering team look at all the data that they've put together. Our board president is on the steering team. We have four students on the steering team, a community member, a parent, and myself, and then three staff members. They're going to look at all that data, find some themes, try to summarize that. And we'll use the themes and summary that they find for the second round of the same thing, which will be similar to, we'll have a staff session. It'll be more around strategy identification. So we'll do a staff strategy session, a student strategy session, and we'll do another family survey. Then that steering team will do the same review and summarization. They're going to send that to a community planning group. That's going to meet in March. That'll be a larger group. I think Natalia offered to be our second board member on that group. Be about 45 people or so. And they're going to try to synthesize the work that we produced through those first two rounds, put together in order of operations. And then they'll present that to the Board of Education. We're shooting for an April target for that. So I'm really excited about that process. I appreciate the perspective of the board of let's try to include as many voices as we can in that process. It's different than any type of strategic planning I've been involved in, in the past. But I think it, it's really inclusive. And it forced us to think outside the box and rely on students because we need a lot of manpower to facilitate some of those sessions.
Are board members welcome to sit in the back and be flies on the wall with any of these?
Yeah, definitely. So ours, our staff session on January 9th, that's a Monday, when staff all come back. And that'll be between nine and 11 ish. So if you're interested in coming to one of those, definitely let me know. And we can hook you up in a group. The student sessions are on a couple Wednesday mornings. I think it's the last Wednesday of the month. I'll have to get back with you on that time. Last Wednesday of January, maybe the second Wednesday morning in February. And the staff will meet again a second time on their March Institute Day, which is the first half of March. It's another Monday. You can definitely come.
You need to get to us, and we'll get back to you on that?
Yeah, let me know if you'd like to be involved with any of those. I can get you the details. They're all morning sessions. The student sessions are earlier. The staff ones are around nine o'clock. Love to have you see how that works. And.
The student sessions are going to be on the late start day?
Correct. Couple Wednesdays. And the way we're identifying students for those is we have student leaders that are, we're trained to be facilitators. They are, for the most part, leaders of a club or organization. They're part of the principal executive council. And they're responsible for bringing five to 10 students to those sessions. And then we have staff that are nominating students as well. So when students come back from the break in January, they'll get an invitation right away to the two sessions. They can come to one, both. Sometimes kids can't come. But that's how we're identifying students. Yeah.
I add two cents to that. The four students that we have participating right now are phenomenal representatives of the students. I mean, there's one from each grade. I mean, they're great. And when they're going out and they're looking for more students to participate, they're being very cognizant of, let's get a student body that's as diverse as what our school is. So they're not- school is. So they're not just looking for the immediate friends, they're looking for good representatives of the school.
It's been cool to have kids actively involved from the beginning in the planning. Uh that's all I have for my reports. Uh we did include a treasures report. Uh we can have Dr. Engel walk through those slides.
So in front of you, this is for the month of October. So this is um, oh, you got November 1st? All right, we're gonna do November 1st.
Let's just do November. Let's just skip October.
All right, we'll just do November. That's fine. All right. So in front of you, you can see at the end of FY '22, all revenues, we're at 49.6%. At FY '23, we're at 52.6%. We're trending quite nicely. On the expenditure side, they're almost identical, 20, 37.23 versus 36.26. Next slide. So year-to-date revenues, this is across all sources. Um right now, we're at 52 point, uh let's call it 6%. Projected, we should be right around 45.09, so we're doing quite well there. Uh actual year-to-date from local sources, we're at 55. Uh projections show right around 49 and a half. And then state, we're at 41.3. Where in previous years, we were right around 31.42. On the expense side, we are pretty much right on the button. Um actual year-to-date expenditures, we're at 36.16. Uh the projection is at 37.5. Year-to-date salaries and benefits, we're at 33.4%. Projection should have us right around 33.5. And year-to-date other objects included in special education, we're at 40, let's call it 42. Projections right around 46. Next slide.
So just, I'm sorry, go back.
Yep.
So for the first time, I think in my seven and a half years, the state's ahead of.
State's doing actually pretty okay. They're they're regular. I'm going to use the word regular right now.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, they're they're.
Okay.
Yeah, they're ahead.
They're doing what they should be doing.
Yeah.
We've never had this.
Right.
I mean.
Always been behind.
They've always been behind.
Yeah.
They're they're doing their their, let's just say they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, just they haven't in previous years. So next slide, um this is our fund balance trends. As you can see right there, uh we peaked out in October and this is the drawdown all the way until May. Um right now, we 47.4 million dollars and going uh it's it's almost a parallel line exactly where we were last year. Um so we'll be low point again there in May and then uh we'll summer receipts coming in there in May and June. So should bring us back up a little bit.
Are we the blue or the red?
Currently, right now, we are the blue. Last year was red.
Good to see, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Uh I think that's all we have for our reports, unless there are questions about any of the reports. Okay, uh we're gonna, we've got a couple department presentations. Uh the first one is from our partner with the Schuler Scholar Program.
I can go without a mic if everyone can hear me well. My name is Uriel Gonzalez.
You're broadcasting too, don't forget.
I'm sorry?
You're broadcasting too.
My name is Uriel Gonzalez and I'm the school director for the Schuler Scholar Program. I started off in Schuler in 2016 as a college counselor and moved into the uh the school director role about three years ago. So we're going to go through the agenda for the partnership meeting. Uh we're going to review the year, our scale and our retention, scale how many scholars we brought into the program, our retention, how many students stayed in the program, our college matriculation outcomes, college graduation, our increased scholarship and support for Schuler scholars, our school site goals, and then looking ahead into the next year. This is just an image to show our scholars putting names to faces and um, you know, who we serve. So our organizational goals start with trying to recruit as many students that are qualified for our program. We recruit first gen, low income and underrepresented students, and then retaining those scholars so that they meet the academic profiles to get into very selective, private liberal arts institutions. Then um once they are accepted to those liberal arts institutions, we hope that the majority of them will graduate with the support that we've given them during high school.
Can I read real quickly?
Yes.
You say selective, qualified students, what qualifies?
Uh first, there have to be first generation, so meaning a parent has not graduated from a a four-year institution, low income, which we consider 85,000 and under from a family household income, and then uh underrepresented in college.
Thank you.
So why our mission is important. I know I don't have to preach to the choir, but this is an interesting quote. At the current rate, it would take the nation's colleges and universities another 70 years to recruit enough Asian, Black, Latinx, and Native American students for their enrollment to somewhat reflect America's demographics. For Native American and Black students, it would take more than 300 years to form a representative student body. And I'll let that sit for a little bit. So one of the areas we hope to improve is our under enrollment of first-generation students in very selective colleges and universities. Even though first-generation students are qualified to attend these institutions, they are under-enrolling. They will statistically be more successful at these college campuses that have more supports in place. So graduation rates are higher by by selectivity. As you see, 6, 76% of students graduate from very selective institutions. So our program scale. So we are right on track to uh be on par with 2021 and uh bring in about um 24, 25 students. Um this year, we um or the previous year, we brought in 22 new scholars. We are planning to bring in about six uh ninth graders and then the majority of our recruitment comes from our eighth grade to our ninth grade students and we plan to be around that 18 mark again. So our our uh students starting the academic year has sort of fluctuated a little bit, but it stayed within that range of 58 to 67. We hope to be on par with that, with this year's recruitment cycle. So um this is the percentage of students that um that take, well, the percentage of the schedule of students that have honors and AP courses in their schedule. So at freshman year, about 50% of their schedule roughly is uh honors or an AP course. And then as they get to senior year, that increases to about 75 to 76% of their core schedule uh being AP courses. It's necessary that students take a rigorous academic schedule to be prepared to get into these selective institutions, but also to be successful at these institutions. And as you can see, the average unweighted GPA, the measure that we use is unweighted uh just so that it's easier um for the colleges in terms of reading applications. But their unweighted GPA without considering those honors and AP course weighting um is a 3.6 by the time they graduate Schuler and they graduate Warren. So withdrawals, uh this is a formula we consistently tweak every year. We try to retain as many students as possible. Some students will withdraw from the program because they decide that they don't want to persist in one of those selective, private liberal arts institutions and they have other higher education goals or academic reasons. They don't meet the academic requirements we have, which is to meet a 3.3 uh unweighted GPA every year. Uh and then some students that go on and matriculate to non-Schuler institutions. We work with the with 140-plus partner institutions, which we send students to. And those are selected based on retention rates of students who are underrepresented first generation, the amount of funding they give stu they give students to uh attend those institutions, and then their national reputation and their connection with Schuler. This is a college list um for the class of 2022. Um I'm sure you recognize institutions there. Um we had some Ivy Leagues, uh but all of those institutions are very selective and have given great funding to our students to attend. Current college acceptances, we do have an early decision acceptance to Washington University in St. Louis, Wash U, and then we have an early action acceptance to Lake Forest. Our average financial aid for the Schuler class of 2022 is $64,651. Uh that's gift aid, a debt does not need to be paid back to the institution. And then their average, the average estimated family contribution met. So this institution determines how much a family can pay towards college. Well, 95% of that was met through gift aid. Our college freshman persistence rate, as you can see, Warren uh had 100% retention rate for most of the the past four years. Um it's a very great statistic to show that our students are prepared for college. And then our six-year graduation rate is slightly lower than the Schuler average, 89 um to 90%. I asked the question, what does that do to? And it's not academic reasons. They say it's mostly financial or mental health reasons. So we are trying to get ahead of that and prepare our students for that experience in college and encouraging them to also take mental health leaves if they need it. Our support for college students, so students right go through Warren, once they go off into college, we do provide additional support to be successful and to graduate from college. So I consider Schuler a two and through college program. We give them a starting college stipend, $1,000 to um really spend on school supplies, books, anything they need to get started at college. Uh college health insurance grant that they can apply to to pay for the health insurance on the campuses. The Schuler Scholarship, uh which is $2,500 per year, they are attending a Schuler institution, $10,000 uh if they are um an undocumented student per year. One-on-one support with a mentor while they are in college. And then we have a campus ambassador that holds events at each campus um in order to build community there. An emergency grant in case something comes up during the time they are in college, we will um give funding based on the situation and how much they need. And then a spin grant for um unpaid internships that we cover the funding um that the unpaid internship does not cover. So the Schuler Foundation um is an extension, the Schuler Education Foundation is an extension of our program um that invests in um underrepresented um students, right, at top and at top-tier liberal arts institutions. So um we give funding to these institutions to recruit more underrepresented students on their campuses to create a more welcoming environment for our students. So um we have, we had a young alumni initiative that just completed where we had colleges um compete to to see which one, which ones get more young alumni to donate. And then we provided a monetary investment in that college, in those colleges that had more young alumni participate. And then currently, um the access initiative, which is designed to increase more low-income and undocumented students at these highly selective institutions. So the investment is not just in the high schools, the investment is in these liberal arts institutions, which we send students to. Our goals for this year um are to, you know, foster an inclusive community amongst our scholars, especially with the disconnect that COVID and remote learning caused. Um we want to build stronger relationships with teachers at both campuses. We want to develop um executive skills in students. So we've created this rubric to help track executive skills and build in um initiatives and um programs to help build those specific core areas for executive skills. And then staff will improve um upperclassman outcomes by having more students meet that GPA and thus get into those uh really great institutions. We have resumed our, for updates, this year, we have resumed our in-person programming and our planning for in-person opportunities the second semester and summer. So we'll have a spring break college trip and a summer college trip uh for students, a summer camp for uh rising sophomores, and then summer college programs for the class of 2024. The summer college program, they attend a college campus for about two weeks, take a college course, and get the experience of what it's like to be on a college campus prior to to matriculating. And that is us. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Good question. How are you funded? I must admit.
Uh we are funded funded by Jack Schuler, um Jack Schuler and the Schuler Foundation. Um he invests in our organization and we're across 15 different high schools and slowly but surely expanding. Um we've actually expanded to Milwaukee this past, uh probably about three years ago.
You know who Jack Schuler was?
I know the name, but I don't know why.
He was the CEO at Abbott. And then he started uh the one that burned all the waste, the medical waste. I can't remember the name of it, but he started another company after that, so.
Worked sometime at Texas Instruments as well.
Yeah, Texas Instruments, yeah, in his early career, yeah.
Do you have any other questions for our Schuler partners?
Great job.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to jump in here. This was the first presentation I heard in this building. I came, when I came last year uh in December the first time and I was really interested. It's a very unique program. I think we're really lucky to have it. I thought that then they've been kind enough to kind of keep me in the loop as I came in and learn more about the program. It continues to be impressive, I think, and is a model for uh just how we can wrap around students. I'm really appreciative and I've got a good team working for me right now.
I know two students who graduated this past May with the program in college, so it's awesome. Thank you.
I'm sure they're great.
They are. They are.
Thank you. And I think we've got, you can pass the clicker on. I think we've got uh another department report here.
No hiding.
I think so. We're going to talk a little bit about our English Language Learners program, our EL program here in the district. Uh so I'm going to kind of start it off and I'd like to introduce our team. Uh Peter Cupfer is our Assistant Principal for Instructional Services at O'Plane. Matt Jones, our Assistant Principal for Instructional Services at Allman. And Leanne Monderwick is Boncher, is our EL liaison. Uh she teaches courses at both campuses and also helps us with a lot of the leadership tasks in our EL program. Uh so between the four of us, we all kind of manage different aspects of the EL program here at Warren. Uh so I'm going to share a little bit about uh some of the experiences we've had working with ISB this fall. Uh then I'm going to turn it over to Matt, Peter and Leanne to talk about a lot, to highlight the work of our department, uh which is, continues to grow and expand uh over time. So so far this year, uh we entered into ISB compliance monitoring uh through the state. So in the fall, we were notified that we were going to be, uh we had to submit documentation of our EL programs uh and that they were going to come visit us on site. And what they're doing right now is that they kind of, ISB multilingual kind of went on hiatus for a little bit with the pandemic, uh but they started the um a process of they're trying to get to all of the districts throughout the state. Uh we were selected uh due to some flags of some things, uh some data that had turned in. Um we'll hi kind of highlight a few of those things right now. Uh they came out and said, well, here's some of the things that you're doing well and here's some of the things that you can improve upon. Uh so they came out on site in October. Uh we had to submit documentation um in early October. They gave us our feedback in around Thanksgiving. Uh we are about to submit our corrective action plan to the state uh later this week. We should, hoping to hear back then in late February, early March, uh feedback on our corrective action plan. I've been working with our ISB principal consultants that are assigned to us to kind of navigate that. Uh Matt, Peter and Leanne and I have been work getting feedback from them as we've kind of worked through those plans. Uh so we feel pretty good about it. Um if we have to make any revisions, we will. And then after that's all accepted, hopefully around spring break time, uh we'll be good to go. And then next year, they will come back on site next year just to check on our progress and make sure that we're actually implementing uh the plan that we've outlined. So that's kind of the the compliance process. So it's about an 18-month process. Um so what we missed, Brandon, I think we missed our, we got a slide that's hidden. So what I was going to talk about is a little bit of highlights and the things that they in our report from ISB uh that we are doing well and then a couple of the the areas that uh the slide right there, that one, yep. So some of our strengths of our program, uh we have, uh when they were on site, they've visited several classrooms and our principal consultants were very complimentary of our instructional staff. They uh talked a lot about the quality of instruction they observed, the instructional practice, the relationships ours, teachers have with the students, um how engaged the kids were were in in instruction. Um they really, they've our curriculum, uh the, we had to submit curriculum documents um in all the core areas uh for sheltered instruction uh from freshman through senior year coursework. Uh the, all of those were fully in compliance with Illinois State Learning Standards and uh with EL expectations. Uh our EL students were determined to have access to the same opportunities as their general education peers, which is something that we do work very hard on, make sure our kids are all able to access different opportunities um in academically as well as extracurricularly. Um the requirements for duly identified students, those are students that are in special education and EL, uh that we are in full compliance with those regulations. Um and then our professional development for all staff is appropriate. So our general plans and how we train staff, our staff in general, working with EL students um in their classrooms and what we provide for them is appropriate. Uh areas where we needed to provide corrective action, um our student records and state reporting, uh we are in, we're increasing exponentially in our EL population. Um there's a lot of work uh student record, records and record-keeping that goes with that, um and how that gets reported to the state. Uh they uncovered a couple of things that we just need to do a little bit better with and uh improve some of our practices. Uh the state has also upped the district requirements in terms of translation services. So in the past, we've done every, we do everything in English and Spanish. Uh but when we talk about EL, if we have a student that comes to us that speaks, where the home language survey says they speak Ukrainian, we actually need to make sure that they have a home language survey in Ukrainian. We need to be communicating with parents in their, all of their native languages, not just English and Spanish. Uh so when we talk about translation services, that's what we. So when we talk about translation services, that's what we have to kind of work through. It's how do we expand beyond just English and Spanish, but be able to serve all of our different languages in the district?
Do we outsource?
How do you do that?
Yeah.
In terms of technology, because a lot of it's around communications through technology, through print. Our website uses Google Translate, translates into every language that Google can do. So I don't know if you noticed when Danny's email came out a couple of weeks ago. I think you started doing the translate feature. There's a link on it that actually pushes you right to the website, and it has a pictorial description. Here's how you can get all of your languages. We started using a program called Elevation for our service letters and our communications to parents for EL that translates in over 35 languages, where they actually get their service letter and there's information in their native language. And then we'll start working through other communications that come home and how we, if we need to make any other adjustments or what we can do there. The reality is, in terms of just functionality, most of our parents that don't speak Spanish do speak, we are able to communicate with. If we do need to do some sort of translation service, we have been able to navigate through that. We haven't run into a full language barrier. But there are some districts that do hire translation services. Parent outreach, they just recommend, that's kind of tied to the translation services and strengthening our relationships with our parents. Administrative credentialing, and what that means is during the pandemic, we crossed a threshold of 200 students that are classified as English learners in the district. And when you cross that threshold and you have more than 200 students who are English learners, your requirements for bilingual director change. So before that, my administrative credentials were okay per the state. Now that we have more than 200 EL students in the district, we are required to have an administrator, a person that has administrative certificate, has an ESL or bilingual endorsement, and is also bilingual in one of the languages present in the district. Those are the requirements for that administrative position now. So in one of the findings from ISB basically said, I can no longer be classified, they fired me.
Come on. Can't learn a language today? What's wrong with you?
I know, right? I wish I could, but with our increasing population, we, ISB said, we do need to have that person or that type of credential person in that role. And then training for new EL teachers. Just what we have to do as teachers enter the building is we got to make sure that they understand what the components of our EL program are, what those mean, what a TBI, TBE, or TPI program is, how kids move in and out, and what are the things that we do to help our EL kids, our EL students in the district. And those are, so those five areas are really where the findings kind of boil down to. Again, what I was really excited about was how complimentary they were about our classroom instruction, the quality of our curriculum, and what the things that were, in terms of corrective action plan, are all things that we, all four of us felt that we could do, had definitely could improve in, and were very easily able to figure out, well, we can do this and be better in these areas. So we feel like we'll be improving moving forward.
So who's going to take the lead now?
Right now, we don't have a formal plan for that, other than we're kind of brainstorming what that could possibly look like in the district.
This is pretty hot off the press right now, so we're thinking through a couple of different ways to approach that, and we'll definitely come back to the board probably with some type of response to that.
All right, so I'm going to turn it over to, Matt Jones is going to start highlighting some of the work of our department.
Excellent. So what we're talking through is some high-level highlights from our department. First, a quick overview we're going to talk about. First, we're going to talk about just kind of the background of our program, when the current realities that exist within our program. We're also going to talk about current achievement data for our EL students, current programming and staffing, and then future programming hopes. So identification, so how does a student become an EL? So when a student registers for school here at Warren, they have to do something called the Home Language Survey. If on the Home Language Survey, the parent or the student checked yes as they speak another language at home, then they're identified as EL. That designation will stay with them throughout their time at Warren unless they test out through the access test or choose to opt out. We also use something called the WITA screener when students first enroll here. It's a brief exam that kind of tests a student's English proficiency levels. Excellent. So here's an overview of our program. We have approximately 441 students on our program, and that's a moving target. We have students registering throughout the year. Currently, 353 of those students are receiving services. 113 of them are at Allman, three are in Bridges, 220 are at the Old Plain Campus, 12 are out of house, five are in transitions, and 88 have refused services. Our school also has 25 different languages represented, predominantly Spanish with 380 students, but second is Tagalog with 14 students, Urdu with eight, and five for Serbian and Polish. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Finish your sentence.
Okay. So the students are spread out throughout four years. Ninth graders, we have 134, 10th graders is 93, 11th graders 67, and 12th graders 59.
Hearing the comment, growing exponentially, and then seeing 220 at O'Plane and 113 at Allman, in working with District 50 and 56, is there any reason to believe that 220 is now going to be 300? You know, or is it growing?
Yeah, I think the next slide might actually show the growth chart. Yeah, the next slide is, if you see back in FY14, we only had 52 EL students, and now we're at over 450, and as you see, it's doubled since FY20. So the growth is still coming. It's not over. We're not plateauing. Yeah.
But these are students who participate in the program?
These are students who are identified as EL, not necessarily participating.
Okay. So like, really random, I guess, personal, I would have, or I do mark my daughter as Spanish-speaking, but we don't, we don't do, I mean, I think we would be the category of refusing services. So everyone who selects that they speak a different language at home is in that?
No. So just because when you answer, you respond a certain way on a home language survey, if you speak another language other than English at home, then at some point, your daughter was screened for language ability.
Oh, okay.
And then either you scored at level, like, oh, no, your reading/writing skills are great, and you can move on, or you are identified as an EL. And then if you're learning English, then in that count. So just because you're Hispanic or Latinx doesn't mean that you are an English learner. Just because your parents are from Ukraine doesn't mean you're an English learner.
Got it.
Yeah, the way I would phrase it is multilingual does not equal English learner. You could be multilingual and be fluent in English.
And that's the point of the screener, right?
So the number goes down each year, right? So hopefully that's because kids are testing out. And obviously, some kids leave school, obviously.
So it looks.
Or they opt out.
Part of the reason why our, part of the reason why our numbers are growing is because kids are not testing out. So what we're seeing is a combination of kids not testing out while they're with us in the way that they have in the past, and also kids that are not testing out while they're in elementary school. So a lot of our kids are long-term, are turned long-term ELs. So when they don't exit out, after a certain number of years, kids tend to not exit out of the program. So that's one of the things that we're working on, is how can we improve in catching those kids up and getting them?
Still goes down dramatically over the four years.
But if you look at ninth and 10th grade, while that number's down, it's still pretty consistent. So we're expecting next year to have similar, so it's.
Actually, I see. Okay, thanks.
Should I interrupt? What does it mean to a student to be in this program? Do they get instruction in another language? How does this work?
We're going to cover that.
Got it. I do that a lot.
No problem. Also, you can see at the bottom there, we said between the 29th of August and the 14th of November, we enrolled 15 new students even with that time period. Okay, next we're going to switch over to Leanne.
And we're still growing.
This will answer some of your questions, Mr. Carlson.
We're still growing. Actually, I just tested a student the other day from Palestine, and then I'm testing another student tomorrow who's coming from Guatemala. So our numbers are still increasing at both campuses. When students come and are part of an EL program, there's two different programs that we offer. The first is the TPI program, and that is for students specific to our district, students who don't speak Spanish, so they speak another native language besides Spanish. That's our smaller population of students. They receive sheltered instruction as well as ESL instruction. And then we have our TBE, which is our Transitional Bilingual Program. Those are for our Spanish speakers. And that's whenever you have a group of students, for us, it happens to be Spanish. If there's 20 students or more, that requires us to have a TBE program. So those students also get ESL instruction, which is their learning English, as well as sheltered English instruction, which means they have their core classes, social studies, math, science. They receive language support while learning content at the grade level. So those are the two programs they run simultaneously, based on the native language of the student.
Can you real, I appreciate that. Can you real quick review the difference between sheltered core, just to repeat that, sheltered core classes versus native language instruction?
So native language instruction, we only offer for, in Spanish. The Spanish speakers, they can take a class, Spanish Language and Culture, and that's an in-Spanish course offering for them where they study language. Our sheltered instruction is in English, and so it's supporting students learning English while learning the content of science and math and social studies.
Yeah, and so if a student, if we have, the reason this is different for Spanish than other languages is because we have students that are speaking, a handful that are speaking Tagalog, for example, or might be speaking Hebrew. We don't have enough students. And the state kind of says, hey, at 20 students, you've got enough where you could run a class and actually teach it in that language. So when we're putting a handful of students there that all speak different languages, that's why we teach them the content in English and then try to provide support for that English language acquisition. Am I accurately describing that?
So we have 25 languages represented currently. The breakdown is there. You can see the vast majority are Spanish speakers. Tagalog is our second, our most recent, I would say newest arrivals. I have three students from the Ukraine in my class this year. So definitely growing in languages that are represented here. So with the bilingual program, the TBE program, there's, I guess you could call it two different levels. There's a full-time TBE class program, and that is for students who have a lower access score. So access is the test that language learners take that tells us their level of English proficiency. So if their literacy score, which is their reading and writing score, if it's below this 3.5 number, they're considered to be a full-time TBE student. These are the students who have the most support for language. So they're going to have the majority of their classes in sheltered programming. So that would be all of their core classes with a sheltered language instruction. These students also enroll in Spanish Language Arts Class if their schedule allows for it. A lot of our students from Woodland come from their dual-language programs, so they're used to having Spanish classes in their day. We offer one class for them here to do that. And then some of these students are also enrolled in our newcomer program. So full-time TBE students, I like to kind of in a simple way refer to it as students who have the lowest English proficiency. We have part-time TBE, and that is a 3.5 score or higher on the access test. So these are students who are more fluent with English, their academic English is better, they're higher performing. They also still have sheltered instruction, but maybe instead of, you know, all four core classes, they have one or two core classes, and then they have a couple of mainstream classes as well. The goal is, as they move through our program, that they have fewer and fewer sheltered classes because their English proficiency is getting stronger and stronger. And so the sheltered instruction is, it's content-based instruction. Like, the students are learning what they should at their grade level. They're learning what their English-speaking peers learn. They just have the guided support of language development by teachers who can kind of adapt the language to make the content more accessible to the students.
Can I ask a question? How do we support a student, say like Ukraine? They come, they don't know any English. How do we support a student that's brand-new to the country and they don't know the language?
So those students with the lowest level of English proficiency, they're actually in two of my courses who are for newcomers. They have a double period, so they have an English course with me and a literature course. And then they also go through the sheltered programs or the sheltered classes as well. So a lot of times, we rely on, you know, other students to work together. We have, in some cases, students who help out. Like, I have in my English course, a student who is originally from another country. She's been here for many years, and she's serving as like a peer tutor, and so that helps too.
And our bilingual aides, we also have, we also have a bilingual aide at each campus who are in those courses, supporting students, and again, our Spanish-speaking students, but we have bilingual aides that are working with kids in those courses. Then our aides also help out with study tables and tutoring, and they're there in the summer as well during summer school.
And then somewhere in this, I mean, are they taking a class where we're teaching them English?
That's what, that's one of Leanne's class, that's what her classes. We talked about our newcomer program. Our newcomer program is English and literature, so that's where they're learning the basic English skills and they're learning reading skills.
I say one more thing to that, too. The kids are pretty tech-savvy, too. For example, the three Ukrainian children were in the library for a study table a few weeks ago, and the child wanted to check out a library book, and she didn't know how to, so she brought up her phone with the message typed and translated, like, how do I take this book home? And so we were able to work through the app on her phone to get that bridge covered as well.
That's cool.
And so this slide talks about the number of sections of courses that we've added and tried to add as the numbers have grown. So back in 2018, 19, you can see kind of the number of courses that we were offering and the number of sections. Most of the courses, there is only one section of, and there were less courses than there are now. And you can see this fall right now, we have many more sections of our courses, specifically in the English courses. You see English 1, who go up to four sections, English 2 up to three sections. And then we've added in some of our other core areas. We've added a chemistry class, we've added a geometry course, we've added more social studies courses, particularly at the Allman campus. You'll see a couple of like US history and environmental science. We've added more courses as those students have not exited and now moved over to Allman. We've had to add more courses at the junior and senior level as well. And the class sizes, you're seeing there, we included those just to kind of show, even though we're adding more sections, we're still kind of up against it in these classes. They're kind of bigger than we'd still like. I mean, you're talking about classrooms that have a wide variety, kids have just moved to the country, and kids that have been in the country for 10 years, all kind of in the same classroom with different levels of language ability, then also different levels of academic ability. So it's like a double differentiation, so it's super difficult to teach. And so we try to keep those classes low, but even with going up to, you know, four sections of English 1, we're still packing 24-ish kids in that class, and it's tough. If you want to talk about the toughest assignments some of our teachers have in the district, it's teaching these courses. And so we're trying to get creative. We've added, you know, more teachers to our team. We had six teachers back in the 18, 19 school year that were involved in teaching EL students. Now we're up to 12, coming from our different core areas, teaching a different numbers of sections of the courses during the day. We used to have one para, now we're up to two paras that speak Spanish and translate during class for the students, and we are authorized right now to hire another one, but we just can't find anyone else that wants to be a bilingual para sadly. So that's kind of where our sectioning is. We do offer professional development specifically for our teachers in the English Language Learner Program. Every year, Matt, Chris, and Leanne and I all attend something called the Bilingual Directors Conference or Meeting that the state has, where we learn about any changes in policies or instructional practices, or just structures that other schools are using. It's a three-day conference that we attend various days of. The state also offers a multilingual conference that our teachers attend. It used to be in-person. The past two years, it's been virtual, which has its plus and minuses. Sometimes it's better because the teachers can watch the videos and sessions on their own time instead of trying to take time off of the classroom, but also virtual conferences aren't always as engaging. So our teachers attend that. We have teachers in our program and out of our program currently that are taking graduate-level courses in supporting English language learners. We have, interesting, we have an art teacher right now who's working on getting her ESL endorsement. We have a PE teacher at Allman that just got theirs, and so we have staff in the district that are taking those classes to better support the students. We have, our math teachers go to this EL math group that meets over at Mundland High School, and we've started this year, and will continue going forward, doing a whole building English Language Learner PD for the staff. And as Chris mentioned, also baking into our new teacher induction program going forward, starting next year. We also, four times a year, have a bilingual parent advisory committee meeting. We talk to the parents about resources we have, how we spend our EL funds in the district. We have one a year where someone from CLC comes over and talks about the college process. Attendance is very variable. It's not super large ever at the meetings. The Camino College gets the biggest attendance of the year, but often we're lucky to have 10 families attend the meetings, maybe. We're trying to be creative now. We're trying to, we're talking with District 15, 56 about having a joint BPAC between our three districts to try to both get our feeder families information about high school and also kind of increase and bolster our attendance at those meetings and have more engagement with the families. The parents that come are super excited. It's super fun for them. They learn a lot about what's happening in school. Sometimes we tell them things their students aren't telling them, that the students aren't happy that we're telling them.
Just shocking.
Right? And so they're super fun meetings. We just wish more people would attend them. So we talked earlier about, we currently have 88 students who refuse services. Uh, so we talked earlier about, we have, currently have 88 students who refuse services. And so just a few reasons why they might refuse services. Sometimes if a student has a, is both dual identified as an English language learner and with the IEP, uh, the time in their schedule in the day doesn't allow for them to get services in both areas, even though, you know, we're supposed to. So a lot of times, um, if their IEP requires they be in a high level of special education courses, they'll waive their EL services in order to be enrolled in their special education coursework. Uh, sometimes we have students who, even though they haven't passed the access test yet, don't necessarily need the support or the parents, and the students don't feel they need the support of the sheltered instruction. So they'll waive the services. Or sometimes families have the perception that the EL courses are not rigorous enough, uh, for students. Uh, and so they'll waive services. But then when they go to the gen ed courses, they, they, they struggle. And that's, that's one of the more frustrating situations when we have students who have scored maybe a two or three on the access test, but they waive services. And then they're getting Ds or Fs in their gen ed courses, and our hands are a little bit tied. Uh, but we're trying to, uh, we're trying to kind of deal with this. We're trying to add more non-content courses, so like more, uh, EL study halls. So if families are really leery of, you know, the core courses being, um, in sheltered instruction, we can at least, uh, put them in a study hall with an EL teacher to help guide them through that process and trying to coordinate with, uh, special education to, uh, serve those students better. And then also looking, as I mentioned, we have some teachers who aren't necessarily teaching sheltered courses in the EL program, but there, uh, we can schedule the students in with them, kind of creatively. So they're still maybe getting teachers who have been trained in that, uh, language support to help them. Okay, sorry. We did some changes a little bit earlier. Uh, so we, as Chris mentioned earlier, we do have a, a large number of long-term ELs. This is the largest, kind of, it's a, it's a trend we're seeing in the state a- a- as a whole, is students not exiting, um, EL programs. And the number of long-term ELs is growing across the state. And so typically, uh, according to the, the language expert, students should exit out of an EL program in about five to seven years. And you can see, um, Warren, this is a chart of all of the EL students we have in the district. And so it tells you the number of years, um, the students have been in EL programs. So we have a big clump right there around nine to 10 years, which indicate kids starting probably in first grade and then being in EL programs for the entirety of their K8 career, and then still in that with us. So it's over, about, about half of our kids, um, have been in EL programs since, like, they started schooling, which is, um, provides just a kind of an interesting situation because as I mentioned, then you get in these EL classes and you have these students that have just moved in from Guatemala into class, along with kids that have been in American schools for 10 years. Right? And so the teacher is trying to balance that instruction. It can help sometimes because the kids can help each other, but other times it, it's not always the best, um, situation in the classroom. Um, yeah.
Um, so for assessments earlier, um, I think Matt mentioned that when students, um, come to the district and register, they're given a home language survey. This kind of lets us know if we should screen students, if they're speaking another language at home. Um, the WITA screener is, um, basically a shortened test. Um, there's a reading section, there's a writing section, a speaking and a listening that I administer to students who are transferring new to the district. And that helps us determine, um, what courses they should take when they start school. Um, the other test that, that accompanies that is the access test, and we're actually about to be starting that. That's an annual test that all EL students take. Um, it's administered in January and February. And again, it has the, the four domains, um, where students are tested. And it's a computerized test, and students work individually on it. And it, it tracks their growth with language over the course of the, the time they're in EL classes. So their access scores help, or they determine the level of services they'll take the following school year. And then, um, students exit by achieving a score of 4.8. The test is scored on a six-point scale. So every category, six points. The 4.8 is the exit score, uh, which means that they're close to, um, bridging to what a native speaker would be, um, able to handle in English. We also use the STAR test, um, to track or to monitor students', uh, reading growth. So we do that test at the beginning of the year, just to kind of get a pulse on where they're at with reading. And then we administer that test later in the year as well, to kind of see how they're doing with reading and how also that score compares with their access score. Because, you know, some, sometimes one day of testing isn't good and, you know, different things happen. So we like to have a different variety of, um, data points to help us pinpoint instruction for them. Um, access testing, I just, I mentioned is the, you know, four par- four parts to testing, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Um, and all those four scores combined together. Um, if you take a look at the spring scores from last year, this is an average. I, I just think it's interesting to point out, um, a lot of our students do really well in the listening portion, which is great. Um, it sure, it shows that, you know, they're, they're able to understand what's happening in the instruction. But the speaking scores are relatively low. Um, and these are students who, most of them have, many of them have been in, you know, English schools for a long time. And so that's one area that we're really trying to work on to get these students to produce more speaking in English on their tests. I mean, a 2.9, that's like a newcomer level is like anything below three. But these students have been in America and many of them speak a lot of English. They just don't do that on the test. Um, their reading score average is a 3.7. The writing and the composite score, it's kind of hard to, you know, measure from year to year because as students exit, right, that kind of shifts the scores. And then depending on how many newcomers come into the district each year. Um, so those numbers are, it's, the averages are nice to look at. Um, and it helps us kind of see how we're doing, I guess, as a district, but also where we can push kids more. Yes.
Four point, I mean, is perfect five? What is 4.4?
Um, 6.0. 6.0 is the highest score. Yes.
So my question is, it seems to be, they can't act, exit services unless they get that, I thought you said, 4.8 score on a six-point scale. Could some of this be, and as you noted, like, speaking average score 2.9. Just lame in question here, could there be some type of like self-fulfilling prophecy going on where if they're in some kind of TBE program with a lot of supports, then they're not getting as many opportunities to practice English? And then ultimately, or, I don't know if that's a weird question or not, but I can only equate it sometimes to like, other non-ELL, or EL, sorry. I know they dropped the L. But non-EL, uh, programs where, um, modeling behavior or, um, like special ed services, sometimes, um, eh, 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 when you, when they're with their fully English-speaking peers, or if, um, they just get those natural opportunities to practice speaking to the casual conversations, the conversational language. I don't know, I'm just curious, your perspective of why we have kids, um, because ultimately I would think the goal is to exit from services. I mean, these are kids that possibly have been with us through the time they started Woodland and Gurney 56. Like, why are they not, why are they not exiting?
Um, I think some of it has to do with effort, effort on the test day. Um, to talk about the speaking, students have in our EL program, like, all of the classes are in English. And so they're participating in English. Um, and then they also have classes that aren't in EL. So they're with English-speaking peers too. Um, so they have many opportunities to speak English. They're not like speaking Spanish all day long. I just, that's not something that happens. Um, but it's just a matter of them utilizing academic language on the speaking test.
Gotcha.
As opposed to, you know, back in the day, when I started here, we used to administer the speaking tests one-on-one with the student. And so we could, they could ask, answer a question. And if it wasn't a, a solid or a long enough answer, we could prompt them to ask another question, to get more information from them. Now that the speaking test is on computer, whatever they say is what they say, and the test goes on. There's like no follow-up questions to kind of get to prompt them to maybe speak more. So I think many of them are able to speak more. Um, they maybe just choose not to, or...
Yeah, I, and
I can pull on the test.
And my mind just jumps to various things, like, when I see the list of, and I'm an outsider, so I don't know internally what goes on. But the, when I see different classes, courses that, where their support is there, which is great. But then I can't help but think, does that take the place of another type of course that they're missing out on because they're in this course? So could there have been some type of other English language arts course that involves like creative writing or something that they're missing out on because they just can't exit through access this class? So I don't know if that ever happens or not. Maybe it's just in my head, but thank you for answer.
Why they're not exiting?
Well, I want, our
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure all kids have the, the, we have this breadth of courses that are just really rich and wonderful. And, you know, I get my, I keep getting stuck on this, uh, it's just hard for them to get out of this program. Because of states, you know, and the state scores, and I totally
And we do, we do work with our families. We work with the kids. So to your example, Tony, if a kid wanted to take creative writing and not take sheltered English for, we wouldn't stand in their way of doing that. We want to make sure they would have the support. We want to make sure, because we all, one of the cla- classes on the slides that we haven't really talked about is we have a class called literacy. And what that is, is that is a class that we run to support our English learners in their non-sheltered classes. Uh, so, um, and we created that a long time ago when we had very limited EL staffing. And we had to figure out, how do we help kids in chemistry? Because we don't have a sheltered chemistry course. And so now that, that course is kind of filling that role. So when they are in gen ed, and their kid does want to take like a creative writing and take something else that's outside of that sheltered program, we have additional support waiting for them.
Thanks. It's a lot of terminology here, and I've learned a lot already this evening. So thank you.
The other thing that might make you feel a little better is like just, just this morning, like, we took two kids that were getting As in shelter biology and shifted them over to like gen ed biology. So we do monitor the kids, and as they show performance, we look at which kids can handle maybe one, or, you know, as Leanne said earlier, kind of shift them from the full-time to the part-time as they show competence in the, in the program. So some, especially as some of our classes were getting kind of big, we started to look at which kids are doing really well. And so maybe we can slide them over without like harming them, right? So we do try to make sure we're getting them exposed to that as much as possible. Um, just, I think this might be a little redundant now, but we do have students that are dual identified in special education and English language services. And we do try to give them, um, services in both when we can. Um, uh, Leanne works with the, the special education department to find that, um, trying to balance that. So a lot of our kids, say if they have an IEP in reading, then we'll try and get them into the sheltered math classes or sheltered health classes, so that they still get some of those EL services during the day. We do have a half-period, uh, study hall right now called ELL Resource. Run, we run it twice a day, uh, during lunch for the students who can't fit any academic, uh, shelter classes into their schedule. These all have this class or that, their, their lunch study hall is with an EL teacher, as with our duty, to give them some of that language support and, and services during that time period. So we are also always in the search for people who are both certified to be special education teachers and EL teachers, but they don't really exist, um, in the world. So, but we're looking for them. Um, and, uh, last thing here is we do have a class that Leanne mentioned earlier called Spanish Language Arts and Culture. It used to be called Spanish for native speakers. Uh, if you've ever heard that class mentioned before, we shifted the title and kind of maybe the, the purpose of the class when the dual-language students started coming over from, um, some of our feeder schools. So then we had two groups of kids that were presumably, you know, fluent in Spanish. And so we wanted to kind of capture both of those groups. Um, and so the course exists for, uh, dual-language students that have come to us and also for, uh, na- native speakers. And so not all the kids in the class are EL students, and not all EL students are in the class, but there's a good mix in there. Uh, an interesting, uh, side note for you. So Leanne earlier mentioned we have a STAR test. We give the STAR test, uh, to a lot of our students, uh, in English to test their English reading skills. And so this year, the, the Spanish language arts teachers wanted to give the STAR test. The STAR test comes in English and in Spanish. And so they gave the STAR reading test in Spanish to their students. And we were really excited. Uh, the average re- reading level of those students was fourth grade, which was kind of weird, because these students have, uh, either, either they're native speakers or native Spanish speakers, or they've been in dual-language programs, um, for many, many years. And so we did this because the state just released Spanish language arts standards. We were trying to incorporate. And we were reading through the high school level standards. And the teachers were like, our kids like can't do these things. So we're trying to figure out what was going on. So right now, the Spanish reading level of the kids in that class is around fourth grade. Um, so we're trying to figure out what to do with that going forward. So just a fun fact for you to chew on tonight. Um, and then Matt will bring it home.
Yeah, so in conclusion here, I'm just moving forward. We want to continue to focus, uh, on improving success rates amongst our students. Uh, we want to continue working with parents, teachers, um, and the students to make sure their needs are being met. Uh, we want to continue to support teacher collaboration inside and outside the district to help improve our professional practice. We're also looking to continue to increase the amount of ESL endorsements within our staff. Um, over the last couple of years, we've, we've had a few, few new staff members who received the endorsement, and we're trying to encourage more of our teachers to do it. Um, we continually utilize data to evaluate the effectiveness of our programs. And that's the end of our program.
Lot of work.
Thank you. Lots of information. I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, because we ask questions doesn't mean we think you're doing a terrible job or anything.
You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
And because, and because there, there's more kids staying in the program, doesn't mean we're doing anything wrong. It's just, it's just a trend, you know? And we're just curious about why those trends happen. So it's, it's all good.
It's a moving target a lot of days, too. Like Leanne mentioned, like every, like every three days, I feel like I get an email saying a new student's moved into the district. Um, we had one last week moved in from Pakistan, one from Palestine, one from Guatemala now. And so it's a constant. So if you really a- analyze the slides, you know, none of the numbers add up, because depending whether I pulled it on Tuesday or Thursday, like, the number of kids literally changed in the district. And so we're still at 25 languages, um, but it could be 26 tomorrow. You, you, you never know. So it's a constant moving target.
And just one, the, um, our staff, when we started, Leanne and I started working together on the EL program about, uh, 11 years ago, 10 years ago. And at that time, we had two EL teachers and me, uh, was, was really was the EL department. So over that time, our team has grown. Um, and it's really grown with people that, um, have gone, our t- exist, teachers that have worked in the district have gone back and gotten ESL endorsement and have taken that, that step to being, seeing that we have a need in the district and trying to make sure they have the certification to help kids. And with that, we've been able to increase from out of just English into all four cores, um, and really be able to provide a much more robust program, uh, for all of our kids. So.
Is there a, sorry, I know, we want to move on, but is there any attempt to, or, uh, connect the families with one another with similar languages so they can support themselves in this transition that is?
That's part, that's part of the BPAC, uh, purpose.
But I, I know some school districts have started to make those more social opportunities, because people will come to social opportunities. And then they, parents connect with one another, and they're able to support one another language or academic, or just, you're not the only one.
Exactly. That's why, so that, with the BPAC effort with 15, 56, uh, Louis said, uh, uh, over at District 56, Elizabeth at, at 50, that was one of the reasons we started talking about like, hey, can we partner together, make, um, more of a social thing and create more of a support structure for all of our parents? And is there a way for our students that are, that go to Warren to like be part of that and like helping with those BPAC meetings and really trying to build a community, uh, with that program? Uh, so that's one of the things that we're going to start. We're actually meeting with, uh, those districts in, uh, January to start to try and figure out what that could possibly look like.
Make sure you serve food. You'll get a lot of people if you do that.
That's usually me.
Maybe even some board members.
Well, thank you. You guys are doing a great job.
Next up is the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes Exhibit A, personnel recommendations, numbers 81 through 92 as posted. There are no Exhibit B athletics and activities personnel recommendations at this time. The payment of bills dated December 20th, 2022 in the amount of $5,469,849.28. Regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of the November 15th, 2022. The acknowledgement and acceptance of gifts to the district as presented, and the resolution for the appointment of a successor trustee to the Alice Brewer Scholarship.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Drake.
Yes.
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 Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Moving forward onto our discussion items.
So the first, uh, discussion item on here is just board policies. There isn't, um, a good number. These are not updated other than the footnotes. Uh, some of them do have some minor updates. Some of them have some, uh, significant updates. I don't, there aren't any in here really that have significant impact on our day-to-day operations.
So you're not going to read them all to us? Thank you. Then moving forward to the O'Plane turf.
Yeah, so, um, as we've continued to talk through facility needs and deferred maintenance in the school district, one of the projects that have, one of the possible projects that has come up is replacing the turf. The turf is currently beyond life expectancy. We have had, uh, some rips in the turf that we've had to repair. Keep doing that. Um, but we did go out and, uh, request pricing for But we did go out and request pricing for replacing the turf from a couple vendors. We've got a couple other pricing models coming in here over the next month. So this is just in front of you for consideration, discussion. We'd like some input regarding your priorities around some of the facilities.
I'm going to take this, make it a broader issue than just the turf. And I realize the turf needs to be replaced. My understanding is it's not going to cause anybody harm with the work we've been doing to it. Me personally, you know, before I even start thinking about spending money on some of these items, I would like to see a broader, long-term facilities plan. I mean, we can't just say, let's approve this, let's talk about this. We need a long-term plan before I'm personally going to be in favor of almost anything. I think the only topic I would be in favor of moving forward with at this time, and it's not because I'm looking at somebody right now, is our leaking roofs. Is our leaky roofs everywhere. And that's just a matter of, it's, we've been kicking that can down the road since I've been on the board. Something needs to be done, even if it's just another year of tar paper and duct tape. We need to keep working on that. Anything beyond that, I'm going to really struggle to approve.
So, yeah, I don't disagree with that, but I, you know, we are getting money from our feeder programs that are using that turf. I don't have any idea how many or how much money is involved, but that would, at some point would help underwrite that cost. Because that's, it did underwrite the cost of putting it in the first place over a long period of time. I mean, the youth football program use it, the youth lacrosse programs use it.
You don't charge them?
We do charge them. They were charged, I mean, they each had a, an amount that they had to contribute each year. More than just a normal rental, like a $200. It was like, it was thousands of dollars. I don't recall all the numbers, but I'm sure, I think it's still coming in. If it's not, we should certainly re-institute that. So maybe we could just do the research and see what.
Yeah, definitely I can do that.
See what that, what that is. Because that might be something that says, well, that's going to pay for itself over five years or seven years or something, you know, if we can get.
I would echo Paul's comments, having a much more comprehensive understanding of, across both campuses, everything that we haven't audited. And I'm going to have a lot of comments on the item C here as well. Because we've, we've done a lot of auditing. I wouldn't say we've developed necessarily the comprehensive plan we think we should have. But I feel really good about the comprehensive roof plan that was developed. And we've got life safety audits that have looked at pieces of our, our facilities and things like that. But it's hard for me to allocate funds against something like this without knowing what we don't know. And are we sitting on another million dollar repairs somewhere in our boilers or in a sewage system or whatever it might be? And you know, pipes and so forth and so on. So it really would behoove us to have that audit done as well, to develop that.
I agree with Paul. I think conjecture, I've got a couple of kids, a couple of grandkids that have gone through the football program and I flat out asked him, any turf problems? He'd go, no. So whatever it is, they don't know. My only concern would be as long as there's no liability issue that we get sued for somebody breaking is whatever. But if, in the absence of a liability issue, I'd say just hold up and look at a bigger picture.
That's good feedback. I appreciate that feedback. It sounds like we've got a pretty consistent perspective on that. We can go ahead and move into the next item on here. I was also looking for some feedback on is a larger scale facility assessment. Dr. Engel worked with our architect to put together a proposal for that. It's about $80,000. It includes, I think, of, of import is probably includes, in addition to health, life, safety, it does include a survey of our mechanical, electrical and our plumbing, which I don't think our prior health, life, safety report really got into. But yeah, just a similar type of conversation, I think.
So I'd be, I'd be real curious to look at the details. You know, mechanical, electrical and plumbing is a pretty broad description of what they're going to do. So. What are they going to do? Are we doing vibration analysis? Are they looking at bearing life? Are they drawing amps on motors?
I was going to ask you.
You know, well, there's a big difference. And, and the one thing that I noticed that wasn't included was any what they would call structural stuff. Because I would think we wouldn't want them to look at the roofs. We've already done that. We've paid for that by a professional who did a, I thought, a phenomenal summary of, of what he found. But there's no structural engineering. It says structural engineering survey. I don't know exactly what that means. But at our last meeting, we talked about structural problems with our press box. Does that mean, had we not known about the press box, this audit wouldn't have found that because it's not included in the audit? So I'm not necessarily thinking we should exclude structural work, but I also don't want to have them look at anything we've already looked at. They don't need to look at exits. I think we've looked at every exit door in this building with the life safety stuff. They don't, you know, we did a bunch of HVAC work in the last, you know, and we replaced a bunch of boilers and things. So I don't want to pay for them to look at anything that they don't need to look at because we've already looked at it. And I want to make sure they're looking at stuff we haven't looked at so that we don't have another surprise at a board meeting for something that's fairly significant in cost. So we just, it's real, I think it's real important to understand the detail of what they're looking at, what the product of what they're going to give us looks like. And I'm not looking for a list of replacement projects. I'm looking for an output that says you can get eight, I'm going to keep using the roof report. You guys can fix this now. You'll be replacing it six years from now. Or it's not fixable. I patched it, but you better replace it. There was a, a kind of a level of, for each item, you know, there's going to be, you know, some things that they find in some of our mechanical devices that say, it just needs a good maintenance program. And that'll buy you another 10 years. Or they're going to say it's beyond, it's beyond maintenance. You have about a year and you need to replace it. It's like looking at your car, right? Do you have 10,000 miles in a repair or do you have 200,000? Is it worth repairing? You know, you might have 200 miles. So I don't, I don't know what that output looks like. I'm, I would like to see what that looks like before I would approve this, this proposal.
Get a, I'll reach out to DLA and maybe get a proposal that they've submitted, like a survey back to a district that we can look at to see.
And Tom, if you want, why don't you just have a meeting with them?
I would like to do that.
Why don't you just call them in and let Tom sit down with them and
I wouldn't mind doing that.
And give his thoughts and, and he certainly understands that part of the world much better than I would.
Wouldn't mind doing that at all.
That'd be fantastic. That'd be great.
I was actually looking at the timing of this work, which will be after my tenure as a board member.
Good time for you to look at it then.
And I would be interested in maybe volunteering my community services.
It's good to go on for years.
Okay.
It's important. It's important.
Well, it's not an action item anyway, so it's, which is good. So yeah, why don't you guys just get together?
Yeah.
Do it.
Yeah.
One question I have for you, Tom, and this is way out of my area too. So we, we have this proposal from DLA Architects. Not discounting them at all. Is it worth the time to ask another architect to do the same thing? Give another proposal? I'm not saying put it out to bid, but, or is it okay just using these guys?
I, I think it's okay using these guys if they do this kind of work.
Okay.
And this isn't their first one.
Are they our current architect firm?
Yeah.
I, I don't know what, and so show us one that you've done in the past. How many times have you done this? Let's go talk to the people and were they happy with the assessment they got? If this is the first time, then I would go look for somebody that does this.
And then I think this is clarified at a prior meeting. So they're going to come up with recommendations, but they don't do the work themselves. So there's nothing, they have no reason to create work that's not needed.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
But that's why I asked if they're current architect firm, wouldn't they be the architect firm that's contracted with and then we go to bid and then different company? So they would be involved in the work though.
They wouldn't do the work, but they would get their percentage.
They would get their 8% or whatever the percentage is that typically architects get.
Yeah. It's a good question. We'd want to know that.
Yeah. So they do have a small vested interest then.
There's a small, but they also, one could argue, know the buildings really well. If however long it's been. They may know things that an outside company may never, because they don't have the drawings from 1950, whatever.
Is this the assessment we were going to pay $80,000 for that I had like a panic attack last time? And then you're saying that we got to look at it again?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You, you can spend 80 and prioritize your money and save 300. Because you're spending your money correctly and on the right things at the right time. If something fails and now it has to be repaired, it's going to cost you three times as much in an unplanned scenario.
Plus to Tom's point, you might be spending money 10 years from now instead of right now.
Please volunteer your time.
Mics check the budget. Volunteer. We can fit that in the budget. Anything else on this facility assessment?
Nope. I think those are good marching orders. We can come back next month probably with, we'll work through the next month and try to get Mr. Drake in and be ready next month with a proposal or at least a draft, a first reading of a proposal.
Next up, discussion on the fee collection process.
Yeah. So I appreciate the board's giving us some time to do just some research on other school districts and how the fee collection process impacts students. Right now, just to review current state, students are precluded from some activities if they have outstanding fees and aren't on a payment plan. Most of the students, our impression is that most students that are interested in being involved with activities are willing to go on to a payment plan to be involved with that. But we, we did look into and recognize a priority that the board has in talking about what types of experiences should we allow all students to be able to have. It does look like most school districts are allowing students to be involved with things like dance, like prom specifically. Some school districts aren't, some school districts keep some things from students that aren't a dance, like maybe parking passes. Maybe they aren't able to have parking privileges or they might not have off-campus lunch privileges. But the trend definitely is like Ms. Martinez thought when she suggested we just do a survey here. The trend definitely is that school districts are saying, hey, here's a set of activities or experiences that we think all students should have access to, regardless of their family's ability to pay fees. So that's a discussion that we'd bring back to you to have and provide us some guidance. We, I generally would recommend that if we're going to change things like a fee structure, that we do that in our cycle. We do have a cycle for student fees and that would be something to consider then. However, I know this is a really important thing to the board I'll be looking at right now. So I'll hand the floor over to you for discussion.
If we were to change anything, I would like to see some kind of change before prom for this year. So I don't know if that's a discussion that we go back and table privately and then come back. I, I don't know what our structure would be.
Sure, 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 sure.
But if we change anything, which is what I would like to see for the benefit of high school experience for all students, that if we're going to make a positive change moving forward, that we do it prior to prom.
So going to what you were talking about, so still okay holding, withholding other privileges, but just don't withhold prom?
Well, whether it's homecoming in prom or just prom, whatever we collectively find that the high school experience for the students.
I think that's what you're.
Yeah. So that's what I'm trying to gather. So what do we think it should be? That's the discussion we should have right now. And then maybe next meeting, we can actually have a motion and decide what we want to do. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with doing kind of what we've learned from other schools, withhold other privileges. Especially if students want a parking pass and they don't get that, that can, you know, we have buses. But yeah, free busing. I'm okay if we withhold those other things, but still keep it open for prom and homecoming. I wouldn't say other dances. I would just say those two events.
Those two events. Well, for fiscal year 23, 24.
Can't change that until next year because they've already.
Do we have?
Right?
We'll change for next year.
That's already, that, but you could say, you could change it for prom this year. And then next year it's okay for homecoming and prom, but no parking pass if you're not current.
Right.
I agree. Generally, the normal process is that these types of things are included in the student handbook and the board approves those annually. And so any of those changes, regardless of the prom conversation, we would come back over the summer with our handbook changes and they would be included if that's your request.
Is there any way, what's the order of magnitude here? How many, how many students end up on a payment plan?
Yeah, that's, you want to answer that? I think.
Broken down by grade level. I want to say there's about a grand total. I'm trying to do, hold on, give me a moment.
Most of them are upperclassmen. So one of the things that happens for families, probably it will happen less moving forward with a lower fee structure, is that families get into, hey, oh, $500 my freshman year and now I owe $1,000 my sophomore year. So it's been really easy for families to get into that trap. Dr. Engel maybe, Dr. Engel has with his team started to work on maybe some ways to intervene earlier. You can just quickly give us an overview of that.
We've started with, instead of letting it mount to junior and senior year, because we have some juniors and seniors with 1,500, almost $2,000 plus in fees. So we're trying to be a little bit more proactive. Instead of getting it that way, we're doing like a pre-collections, if you will, like notifying families. Besides the typical payment plans, hey, this is still outstanding from your freshman year. This is still outstanding from your sophomore year. Before you kind of fall into that rut, your, your senior year and here's homecoming on the horizon or prom on the horizon. Here's some opportunities to work out a deal with the district and start getting that debt down. It's been successful. We implemented it. Our first one on seniors that had already graduated. It was like in a last ditch effort. Instead of sending them to collections, it's almost like a pre-collections. So it's not a debt service, if you will, look at it that way. But it costs us, the, the district about eight or $900, but we were able to recoup about 17,000 coming back in. So.
It's a lot cheaper than collection.
Absolutely, absolutely. Where you're splitting almost, you know, a 40, 60. So long story short, the pre-collections, we have X amount that we can use per year. Right now it's 300 a year. So on 300 accounts. And we're trying to get some of the junior and seniors, kind of especially those with higher balances, get them on something going. And just start working with those families, freshmen and sophomores saying, hey, we need to get you doing something. Because we've tried, any student that can be directly certified, we've gone down that, that route already. Okay? We, we've tried the, the fee waiver route as well. So that's school wide, district wide. And we're always, we're always going to have those groups of parents or students that just, no matter what we end up doing, are not going to do anything.
Then there's also that group of families right above the waiver families that just can't do it.
Absolutely.
They're at that cusp of, they can't afford it. When fees were at 5, 600, they plain and simple can't afford it. But then technically they make too much money to, to be approved.
Absolutely right. It's, it's that 10% right above the line that.
And that's, yeah, that's.
So I'm going to try and summarize our collective thoughts here and please correct me where I'm off. I think we'd like to see something that going forward, people are not excluded for prom or homecoming because of fees. So I think we're willing to make a motion on that next meeting. But at the same time, I would like to see, we would like to see probably a list of whatever other privileges would be withheld to help with the payment process. Knowing those won't come into, yeah, those won't come into impact until next year. But let's have that conversation now because maybe that'll help some of the collections. If my kid turns 16, you got a car, but oh, you can't get a parking pass. That might help with the collections earlier on.
Appreciate that. I think that does solve our concern, which mostly is we got to make sure that we have some skin in the game there. Yeah.
Good summary of what we were all thinking.
Yep.
I could, could hear what we were thinking. So.
Appreciate that.
Let's, let's move forward then with action items. The first action item is an approval of the summer school program. Any questions on what was in the board docs?
Here he comes.
Yeah.
Hi, Nathan Karasek, if some of you don't know who I am.
What?
Thanks, John. Just some of the highlights, all of you have received a memo that highlights the changes or how we're maintaining summer school this year. The the biggest things that I would like to explain is that we have, this year, we're going to be hosting it at the Old Plain Campus for in camp, for in-person classes. I think one of the biggest confusions that's out there is that some people believe that our remediation program is completely online and they can do it from home. That's not true. Our remediation is online, but it's in person at school, so students are required to be there. Registration, or summer school starts June fifth and is going through July fourteenth. Our registration starts January seventeenth at seven thirty, at seven thirty AM. We have one curricular change, which is we are changing a course name because it was a little bit confusing for students and parents when they were signing up. It's the Spanish Review for Novice Learners is now being changed to Preparing for Honor Spanish Two. And then again, this year, tuition and transportation are being covered by a grant. So if there's any questions? All right.
All good. Thank you. I move to approve the summer school program, twenty twenty-three, as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next action item is on the bids for the roofing repairs.
Bring in Mr. Crowley himself up here to the mic if that's okay.
Duck!
Come on down. Do you want me to give like a quick little overview of?
Please.
Okay, well, we'll start it. So the district went out for bid for roof repair and for R eleven, R twelve replacement. We're at the Old Plain Campus. We had a public bid opening. The bids were not, not what we were hoping for them to be. So we have it, we're doing a larger Phase One of the Old Plain Roof as a secondary part to increase the square footage of, so hopefully our per-unit cost goes down, and also including the maintenance of both campuses, along with R eleven and R twelve that were specified in the two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two project maintenance grant through the state that got approved. So.
Yeah, this has been a challenging time, as you can imagine. We're used to having a bid opening or a bid invite where we have, we normally, we have a, a pre-bid meeting where everybody comes in and we review the whole thing with everybody at once and walk the roofs. Normally, we have fifteen, seventeen, twenty contractors that show up for this. Well, here post-COVID, we're getting three, four. And this is after sending fax notices out to lists of contractors that are forty people and following that up with phone calls. So what we're running into here to try to be able to explain is that during the COVID period, there was very little that happened in terms of construction. And what did happen, happened fitfully, with starts and stops. So productivity went way down in terms of that, which has affected their estimating programs. Because they take the past twelve years and they roll that into their computer-driven estimating programs, and it's skewing their numbers. So that's, that's one thing that we've been trying to be able to resolve. But the the second thing is the supply chain issue. While it appears to be opening up across a lot of everything, it still hasn't opened up enough for the mid-tier and the low-tier roofing people. So the guys that are doing huge jobs, big jobs, they have no trouble getting the materials. But somebody who comes in and they do, like a school district that comes in to be able to do work periodically during a summer, you're not a regular customer. And it becomes very difficult to be able to get decent pricing and decent attention to the job.
Not a regular customer.
Yeah, exactly. That's kind of how they look at it.
Not big enough.
You're, you're not a big, regular customer in in the market the way that it's looking here right now. The other issue has been the fact that a lot of these guys, because they they lost a year pretty much in terms of their productivity, they're packed up with work. And so when we come in to be able to bid a job like this, which has to happen in a certain time period during the summer, and and we've got to hit a relatively narrow window, they're saying, I don't think I can fit it in. And we're like, you gotta be kidding me? But but that's where we're at. That's the reality of it. So even with the larger project, we're still gonna be lucky to get three bids. And and it makes it very hard to be able to tell, you know, what are good numbers here, too, because the numbers we're seeing, and this isn't just you, this is, we do work for a lot of different people, and and we're all over the board in terms of numbers. Roofing is all over the board anyway, because these guys, sometimes I think some of them use a dartboard. But but this has been ridiculous, and it, I, it's a very difficult spot to be in. And but we've spent an enormous amount of time and energy trying to be able to get decent bidding and try to make sense of this for you. And I gotta tell you, I'm still confused. And I've been doing this for forty-five years. So I would, that we have the the two bids that we've gone out for so far were for much smaller projects. I would not award those. And let's go with the larger one as it comes in, and let's take a look at that on its merits as it comes in. And then we've got a large enough sampling then to be able to tell what we're looking at with your roofs, not somebody else's. And and we'll, we'll make up our minds then. But I would not award the other two at this point. They've been rolled into what we're gonna be doing, so you don't lose any grant money. We can still proceed with those, but we have a chance to be able to get some better numbers. So that's, that's what we're trying to achieve.
Okay.
Sounds good, Chuck.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Very much so.
Flex tape? Maybe we just slap that on the
Not only the flex tape, but also the seal. We have big fifty-five gallon drums of that as well.
And Gorilla Glue. Don't forget the Gorilla Glue.
It's, yeah.
Use flex tape. Second.
Okay, here we go. Motion by Anderson, second by Drake. Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonti? Mr. Carlson? Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes. Motion carries.
Thanks. Moving on to the last action item, the approval of the resolution authoring disposal of surplus personal property.
Follow-up to the roofing, we will have the bids for you during the next month's meeting for the larger project. So have it ready.
Take care, Chuck. That'd be all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the approval here for the resolution authorizing disposal of surplus property, we have three vehicles currently right now that, where is my vehicle list? Which include a nineteen ninety-four, three-quarter ton van, a two thousand F Ford two fifty pickup truck, and a two thousand five GMC diesel dump truck, which are of non-operational
Trying to think of what it comes up north.
That's what I'm thinking. I could use a dump truck. I don't have one of them.
Not this one.
Is that for that volunteer work?
Just put them out to be sold?
We, we were hoping to use it as partial trade-in towards a newer vehicle with a state contract if possible.
So that's what the game plan is, to use it as trade-in?
That would be ultimately the game plan, correct.
Okay, so if we approve this, all we're saying is, yes, let's use these as trade-in value for the new vehicles we want to get.
Or, or we can dispose them at the, and get tonnage weight for steel and aluminum, and go that route with them as well.
So how do we know what's better, what's, what's best?
We could find out exactly what Ford would give us, and it's dealer-dependent. I, I don't see big numbers, but the state contract right now for Ford pickup trucks is downstate. And
Get them evaluated.
The other difficult part is with the Ford contract for the twenty-three production run year, even if we were to get in the queue, it means there's no guarantee of delivery on the vehicle as well, so.
Questions, Steve?
Are we reading the memo here? No, because I want to know what definition of diminutive value is. Last, last sentence in the second bullet. Superintendent designated may universally dispose a personal property of a diminutive value. What is that?
Right, so you essentially, if if I feel like something is
It also said real estate.
Yeah, yeah, if something is diminutive value, I'm allowed to just throw it away.
Yeah, but what, what, what is there
You haven't defined that as a board.
Do we care? I don't know.
So I don't think that the vehicles are diminutive value, so that's why we've got the resolution in front of you. The resolution just says that we can work, we'll work our best to try to get the most bang for our buck out of it.
Right.
It might be a trade-in, but we're, we don't have any plans today to purchase a vehicle.
In education world, you have to account for the value of everything, but sometimes there's stuff that's so small, there is no value to anyone, and then they can just dispose of it.
Fine, but I just fifty bucks, five hundred bucks, five thousand bucks, is there a threshold?
There's a dollar value associated with it, no.
The, the way I've approached, the way I've approached that in the past is if we get around a hundred bucks, I probably need to bring it to you. So like last month, we brought some chemicals. It's was, could have been argued as diminutive, but it was probably over a hundred dollars. If we're getting to a hundred dollars, I'd bring it to you.
So, so, so just to clarify, what we're asking for on this action item is, you have our permission to get rid of them. We don't care how you do it. We trust you. You're gonna do whatever you want.
That's how it's written now, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? I move to approve the resolution authorizing disposal of surplus personal property as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Demonti?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Yes. And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
We have six yes. Motion carries.
That's everything on our agenda. I move to adjourn the meeting.
Heard.
Roll call. By Drake.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Martin? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. Stay safe, stay healthy. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Stay warm.
Happy New Year.
Go home and light a fire.